Hello, everybody.
Good day.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we're all, well, I'd say we're all here. Wait, we still have somebody else who can come in. Well, at this point, we have two board members and one ex officio.
Okay. Can we give everybody a few minutes?
It's on my, I'll start seven minutes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Van, I know Mr. Mark Wilson will be unable to attend. Did you receive a no from anybody else? You've been. Man, you're on mute, but I was just curious, did you hear from other board members that would not be in attendance other than Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Ms. Blick will not be here. And uncertain on Sam Kaufman as he's not replied, but everybody else is supposed to be here. Dexter said he will attend and likely he'll be running late and probably get here at around three.
Okay.
So that's all the information we have at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric.
Is there a question?
Oh, I'm just gonna tell you that if I get up and leave, it's, I've been digging a ditch with a pick and shovel and I'm not used to such fantastic good work. I might pass at any moment.
Well, we'll try to keep an eye on you and depending on how you pass, we'll either call 911 or we'll just wish for you to.
Let me go. We got Doug Dar there, we're not worried.
Yeah, I don't want to do any of that pyramid stuff for you today, Tommy.
Our our muscles and bones aren't what they used to be. I was on top of my house a few days ago putting up Christmas lights and I posted a picture to Facebook. Got like a hundred people telling me, be careful. What are you doing up there?
Gives you confidence, doesn't it?
I, I will admit, I posted it because it was a bit of an optical illusion. It was, I wasn't nearly as high as it appeared as it always was.
It got cold in my little building the other night when it was 27 and the heat went off. So I thought it's probably time to get some more power in there.
Yeah. Well, I'm a little disappointed. I have a feeling what happened was maybe people read through the packet and seemed to be a whole lot to discuss, but therefore we find ourselves just sitting here. It would be better if we were able to have our agenda called at 2:30 and then as a group decide that we'll come back a few minutes before three. But we don't even have a quorum yet.
Okay.
So.
We got Mr. Dar here that's wanting to do do some building and do we have anybody representing the Holloway Group? Dagger? Roland? Not sure.
Well, I don't have any entertainment. Very.
You know, have a thing to us?
If I were going to do anything, that's what it would be, saying the Riverside Institute for 14 years, but I'm not prepared.
Oh, okay. I promise you I won't. I don't want to run everybody off.
Let's see. Man, it's, we've waited 10 minutes and, you know, I just feel like in respect of everybody that has joined at 10:30 that we should go ahead and do the agenda meeting and if board members show up at three o'clock, we just have to have a longer meeting. But I don't think we are for, we're not required to have an agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, a quorum before we do the agenda meeting, right? That's informal. Sorry. Why can't I see me? Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and have the agenda, Van, unless you?
Okie dokie. Okay, just a moment. Trying to get us off. We won't leave. Oh, there we go. Well, let me get back here to my, our business. Okie dokie, the first item of business is Allen Garden, Highway Gardens. This is an existing one lot tract mobile home park that the applicant has decided to do, turn into a two lot plat, which is the mobile home park on the balance of the larger lot for A and a single family structure on 4B. So they're segregating the single family structure from the mobile home park, existing, what I would call a non-conforming mobile home park because it doesn't really have a, doesn't meet the ordinance requirements and I don't think there's been a site plan approved for it. So it's been there for a long time, I think. So the bottom line to this story is that we've been working with the applicant and the primary issue for this particular development is the fact that there's gonna, they're gonna need, they were gonna request variance for two variances really, one for the lot for, for B, for the single family structure because it would be slightly encroaching into the 25 foot front yard setback because there's an additional five feet of right of way required on the plat. So there is a it does not meet the full 25 feet. The staff is supportive of the variance for the lot 4B on the single family structure. It's minor and it's caused by the dedication of the right of way, whereas the request for the variance is on the mobile home park, the staff is not supportive and has not been supportive of that requirement because there's room on this property to meet the setback requirement. So we have, have determined that we would not be supported of that. It's a 40 foot setback required for a single family or commercial from adjacent single family and their single family to the south of this where the mobile homes are close to that property line. So it's 40 feet are required and they're not close to meeting that standard. So we have not supported that variance request and I think the applicant last has told us that they are willing to move the mobile homes around on a lot in such a way as to meet that 40 foot setback. And if they do, we would support the approval of it, subject to that. So we're supportive of the, the, the less than five foot variance on the single family structure on lot 4B. But we're not supportive of a variance on 4A and the applicant has said that they'll move those mobile homes. And if they do, then that should resolve that issue. And I don't think there's really they've met notification, I don't think there's any issues on this other than that. And so what does that have to see? My understanding that the applicant has said that they'll they'll move the mobile homes. They do, then we're, we're in pretty good shape on this, we think.
So, Van, just for clarity, I'm, I'm looking at the map of the, the survey that we received in our packet.
Yeah.
It does indicate the, that there is a 40 foot front setback or setbacks along the boundaries of 4A, that 4.166 acres.
Right, well, that's what it's supposed to be, but if you look at these.
Look at it. They, they provided a new plat. Eric, they originally had a 40 foot setback on lot 4A. I'm sorry, lot 4B, that they only need 25 front and rear and eight on the side. So they have provided us a corrected plat that you do not have. That we received after it was mailed out. The graphic you see on the screen is the correct setbacks.
I do not see anything on the screen. Are you sure?
Well, it's right, it's on the well, you can see that line that's showing you where 40 feet is on the south side and all the mobile homes are included in it. Oh, I said, I thought you were asking about the mobile homes.
The plat that Holloway originally submitted had a 40 foot setback on this lot.
On lot?
Yeah.
For B.
Yes.
But it's not, it was not required. So they inadvertently put the wrong setback on that. It should be 25 feet. So that's so with, now that they've provided, it looks as if there's a intrusion, it's like a one foot and a three foot intrusion into the five foot setback line. So, and so instead of having a full 25, they'd have 22 is what it amounts to. So they're in essence asking for a three foot variance on the front yard setback on lot 4B. And we're supportive of that. But we're not supportive of the setback request, original request of not meeting the 40 feet on the mobile homes on the south line. So again, the applicant has said that they intend to move those mobile homes and the staff recommend approval of all of it, subject to that and would not sign the plat until they had those mobile homes moved out of the setback area. If the board approved the three foot setback variance on lot 4B.
Ms. McClinton?
Yes.
This is Kristy. And it looks like on your staff comment, the applicant misnotify the adjacent property owners also. Has that happened?
Yes.
It has happened. They did do that.
Yes.
Okay, so this is outdated.
It's what?
It's dated, then the staff comment.
Yes, we've, yeah, it's been updated since that point. Yes, the applicant has provided requisite notice of the variance request.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the size of the long and the short of that one, I guess. Anybody else has a question?
I don't think I do. For a setbacks, like, let's see. I'm not finding on here under the staff's comments where they actually requested the variance. But you do say in staff recommendations, staff is supportive.
That. What, what is your question about the variances?
Well, I'm just reading through it. I just didn't see where they have asked, they have requested a variance. I do see it noted in the staff recommendations. But I was just I was just thinking that there would be okay, applicant must request a variance for the single family residence for, okay. That back encroachment on 4B.
Yeah.
I believe you said that must be increased of, okay.
So that first comment should read proposal at 4B instead of 4A. 4B is the mobile home park, 4A is the single.
No, I, I think I see it now. Okay.
Okay.
So increased to 40 for all lot lines and lot 4A. Okay. Support relocated the mobile homes. So, okay. All right, I guess my confusion though is that in the, in the map that, that I have, it does show that there's a 40 foot setback, setback for all of 4A. So maybe that's just reflective of their indication that they'd be willing to do that. Am I following right?
Just a second, we're having a little technical issue.
And in the meantime, I see.
There's the actual plot, plat request, B and A.
Eric, the board does not have
Are you sharing?
Current version of the plat.
You have a, a previous version of the plat. There's been a later one submitted to us since we mailed it to you.
Okay.
All right, then, Mr. Hayes has joined the meeting also. So we have another board member. Next item is track one and two. Final plat on the DAR subdivision. And this is great, splitting one lot into two. We, we discovered that sewers available on the sites. There's no issue on that. We've gotten AutoCAD. So that staff recommendation is approval is filed on this plat.
Anybody have any other questions on that? Okay.
Hey, and I guess the there you can see it. And the other business is a proposed subdivision ordinance amendment regarding the notification process that we began discussing last month. And there you see it. That's the latest iteration you have on the screen as proposed.
I'm not seeing it, Van.
Oh, I don't know, it's on our screen. Do you see our screen where it shows anything? Do you see our screen?
Oh, yeah, it says I'm viewing vans.
Yeah, I don't see anything on the screen either, just a bunch of diagonal lines that.
Yeah, it says I'm showing yours, I'm seeing your screen, but it appears to me that you don't have it. You're not sharing that app.
Your screen sharing was paused. That's what's wrong. Hold on. That's what the problem is. Now we got it, right?
Yeah.
Damn. No wonder there was, you didn't what we're talking about because I was looking at the screen explaining it. So this is the last item on business on our agenda today is propose this and, and this is the latest, what? Well, you can see what I'm putting on there now, right?
I can see chairman communications staff in adjournment, 19, yep. But I think you want to be sharing if you'll go back up to slide 13, 14, 15.
Well, we've got it on there right now, so. So. What do you see now?
Slide 19.
What does it say? We got a problem there, technical issues in.
I'm seeing slide 19, which says chairman communications staff communication adjournment. So it appears as though in the PowerPoint, you just need to go to slide 13.
Now there's, we're where we need to be, but for some reason it's not showing up.
It's just not refreshing.
This is, our screen is paused again for some reason. Resume share. Well, here we are. There we were. Here we are, there we were. How about that?
No matter where you go, there you are.
Yeah. So do you see other business on the screen?
I do.
All right, now we're in business then. There you go. That's the latest iteration of the proposed amendment. Do you see that?
I do.
All right, then we're where we need to be.
Yes. Okay. So we've got a few more minutes before, so yeah, if you could go to the, if you don't mind, if you could go to the first order of business. Do you have the updated plat?
There you go. How about that?
Okay.
Now you can see what we're talking about.
Now I can see what you're talking about. Yeah, because I received in the mail. I did not see those mobile, mobile home.
Eric, we received this plat from the applicant after the mail out went out.
That makes sense. Just letting you know that.
That's why you don't have the latest and greatest.
Right.
Right. And so since we're just seeing that 40 foot setback all the way around and you've mentioned that they're, they've indicated that they'd be will they're literally going to move those mobile homes, all of those.
That's what the applicant indicated to us.
Because we told them we would not support the variance request. If they're gonna replat this subdivision in the mobile home park and then they need to make it conforming. And because all those, those mobile homes are just, just there a few feet from the property line and there's a single family house over there. So if they've got the room and they want to, they want to reconfigure their property, then our position was that they need to meet the ordinance requirement. So they thought about it. They went back and forth a couple of times. I guess they finally decided that they would rather just move the mobile homes than to try to obtain the ordinance approval. The variance approval.
And they are so close to that, the southern line.
Right.
Because just grandfathered in or?
That's correct. So they're asking, they're asking for something and we're saying, well, if you want to do it, then you need to meet the current ordinance requirements and they have the room to do it. So they've thought about it and have agreed that they're willing to do it.
Right now, they're all setbacks on the property.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything.
That's a, that law was planted, I believe, around 1912 or 1915.
Understood. So since they're wanting to break their lot into 4A and 4B, they'll have 4B separated out. Then that's, okay, yeah, all right.
Sure.
All right, got it. Okay, where do we stand? So far, we still have four board members. We need one more to.
Yes.
Mr. Donlin. Boyd Connors.
We have board members, we have you, Mr. Majors, Maseens. And Mr. Hayes is supposed to be in there somewhere, but he's gone.
I am in there.
Oh, there he is, there he is. Sorry. I didn't mean to remove you from verbally remove you from the meeting. All right, so we have four, four, four voters. We need one more. And according to the response, we should have two more coming. Cara Boyd and Connors and
Dexter Doan.
Yeah, Dexter Doan. And Dexter has indicated that he would probably be close to three before he had made it.
Okay.
So there we go.
That's 310.
It's 250.
Actually, 250 now.
When I reset my clock in my office, I didn't I messed up on my office clock.
Okay, looks like we've achieved. When I get Carl on here, we'll have a quorum. But she'll, it won't, so far it's not letting there she goes. All right, so looks like we have five present.
Yes, and we have a, we have a quorum.
And the ex officio Randall is on here also.
Yes, yes, thank you, Randall. Okay, it's three o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started then. I'll call the meeting to order in roll call. I know that we've already done that, Van.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for November 23rd, 2021 meeting. The only, and it's interesting, the only thing I was gonna call out is the spelling of Mr. Hayes's name, Mr. Pay Hayes, but he's misspelled his name on our meeting today as well, fatigue.
What?
Oh, and
Oh, he, he, fatigue, fatigue.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, like sort of
We also have
robot.
We have Mr. Doan is joined also.
Okay, my mission for today is to keep life, life, because it all should be as much as I can. So I just couldn't resist, Mr. Hayes. But yes, the misspelling of his name though, Van, on the members' president, it says Mr. Pay Hayes. Other than that, does anybody else have any any changes or additions to what it says they are as presented?
Or have, well.
If not, I'll entertain a motion that the minutes be accepted as presented with the one change of Mr. Hayes's, his name.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Majors and motion by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, the old business, Allen's Highway Gardens, lot 4A and 4B final plat.
Yes. This is a two lot file plat of an existing This is a two lot file plat of an existing non-conforming mobile home park for all practical purposes. And the applicant has initially requested two, two variances, one variance, which would be for lot four B. Because the additional five feet right away of dedication required on the plat put the existing single family structure, three, three feet into the twenty five, new twenty five foot front yard setback. The staff is supportive of that variance request of a three foot variance request on lot four B. Additionally, the applicant was requesting a variance for the forty foot required setback for the mobile home park, for the mobile homes. And on the south line of the property, you can see virtually none of the mobile homes meet that requirement. So the applicant, the staff was never supportive, has not been supportive of that variance and and the applicant has reconsidered and has advised us that they're gonna, they, they, they have, they're gonna, they're gonna reconfigure their mobile home park to so that it meets the forty foot setback requirement so that they will not request a variance for the setback for lot four A. So there's no variance request requested for lot four A and the applicant has done what they need to do in order to get that done. And they also, the staff has received the notice, notice, and the applicant has met the notice requirements for the variance request on lot four B.
So one thing that comes to mind, Van, is as far as the variance request um, for, for B, the smaller lot. You know, it, it appears to me that the owner of the property has quite a bit to do to move the mobile homes. There's one, two, three, four, five, six mobile homes that will need to be moved, or if not seven.
Right.
Yeah, seven mobile homes that will have to be moved in order to meet the, the requirements for, for A. So is there a desire to seek a variance for, for B by the owner before the mobile homes are, are moved?
What, they're, this, they're requesting the variance for lot four B. They're, they're gonna drop the request for, for A, and we're not gonna sign the plat until they move the mobile homes. So they, they won't get four B or their plat approved for four A until they get them moved.
Right.
Man, is that, is that dotted line across the bottom? Is that where they have to move the rear end?
Yeah, they're, on the south line, yeah, it's a dash line there. It should be at forty feet. You can see virtually none of the mobile homes come close to meeting that setback. But they have a room to do it and they've agreed to do it and that's satisfactory to the staff.
And McClinton, they also need to provide a copy of the approximate location of septic. Is that right? And the, the plat in AutoCAD format?
Well, we've, yeah, we, we need to correct the. Hold on for a second here.
What's the question?
About the septic.
The septic, the septic tanks are shown.
Yeah, they're shown on the plat. They've already got the existing approved for their mobile, for their septic systems. They'll just have to move their mobile homes so that they don't conflict with their own septic lines. And the AutoCAD, that's been provided.
Okay. Mr. McClinton, I'm, I'm sort of of the mind to defer, you know, the, the entire plat until they can meet these requirements, especially for the setbacks for lot B. Um, or is that lot B?
So for A.
For A, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, that's your prerogative. But we don't see that there's a necessity to wait unless, I guess, unless folks don't think we can do it. But we, we won't, we won't execute the plat until they meet the requirement. So it's up to y'all.
And, and that's the final plat.
Correct.
And with that, does that mean that the applicant may not convey, um, I'm trying to find my notes. I'm sorry. With a final plat not being certified, they can't convey lots? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. So they, so it's to their advantage for them to get it done quickly because they want to convey lot four B to someone else. So four A will be in one ownership, four B will be in another ownership, as far as I understand. But they won't be able to do that until we are able to execute the final plat. We won't execute the final plat until the mobile homes are moved to the satisfaction of the staff to meet those requirements, the setback requirements.
And does that mean that when they do move the existing mobile home, there will, the presence of the locations of those uh, structures will be updated to a new uh, to a new plat, diagram and.
Yes, yes. They'll have to, they'll have to revise the final plat to show where the, the, by survey to show where the mobile homes are so that they can prove that they've met the setback requirements.
Okay, and that will be provided to staff by a certified.
Engineer. Or survey, yes.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. So Missines, I think I'm, my, my thoughts were kind of along with you. This seemed like a lot of work to be done. But just thinking aloud, knowing the, that staff will require that an official survey be done um, showing the existing location. Then I think that, that kind of addresses where my thought process, or do you have any more thought, any other questions or any other board members having other questions? Okay, um, then I'll, I'll entertain a motion on the Allen's Highway Gardens Lot four A and four B final plat.
Well, I need to defer the entire final plat checklist and tal, entire lot four and four B until requirements are met.
Uh, which, which requirements are those, Missines?
Uh, that would be under staff requirement, the, um, the setbacks for, um, for lot four A. And, um, as Mr. McClinton said, the it doesn't seem like there's any real reason to even approve four B. Um, if nothing can be done until the the information is obtained on four A, unless I'm misunderstanding that.
Well, Van, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the staff recommendations that we have in our package is, has been, has been, has been changed. Basically, they're not asking for a variance on, on lot four A. They are asking for a variance on lot four B, but that's a minor request that staff is, is okay with. Is supportive of. But the outstanding requirement that we know of on four A is that a new survey be provided proving that the mobile homes have been moved such that it, they, the lots for A. Uh, all of the, all of the mobile homes are, uh, meeting the forty foot setback requirement. Did I state that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, Missines, just assuming for a moment that the board is in agreement with staff on the variance request for four B. The only outstanding requirement is the, the owner provide a new survey showing that the mobile homes are in fact all uh, meeting the forty foot setback. So that's specifically what you're asking that we defer, right? That we defer. Uh, so can you restate your, your motion?
Um, I'm sorry, yes. I, I moved to defer, um, the, the application until the, um, the lot four A has required, um, uh, stipulations, uh, until the, I guess we see the, the plat with the, the mobile homes have been moved in place. I'm sorry, I, I don't know exactly how to state it, but I think you know what I'm saying is that, um, I feel like that needs to be in order first, um, that these two go together in my mind. That they should, they should have, it should be deferred until, um, those mobile homes are moved. And we see the final, we see the plat as it should be. Because right now we don't, the plat is in disarray, um, from what I see. So I would, I would like to see the plat um, in order before I approve it. And, and that's what I'm making a motion for.
Okay, you, and Van, I believe what that would mean is we, we would want to see the, 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 the survey after the, so after the mobile homes have been moved.
I believe that's what she's saying. And I would ask to, at this point, if the applicant is present. The applicant of this project is present.
Yes, I'm here.
There you go.
Okay, um, is that Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all right. Um, do you have any, would you like to say anything, Mr. Rowland?
Uh, no, it's fine. I mean, uh, you know, the owner basically said that, you know, they, they are okay to move the mobile homes as requested on lot four A. And, uh, and we can, you know, we can do that. We can survey it in and I can, you know, submit the, the, you know, the final plat with the move mobile homes when it's, when it's been done.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table then from Mrs. Zine. So I hear a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Majors. Um, so then, um, discussion. Can we, board members have any questions?
I've got one right quick, sir.
Okay.
Lot B, you've got, it looks like one or two mobile homes on it. Uh, what they're moving, will they have to be forty foot away from lot four A? And the two on the end of lot four A, well, they need to be forty foot away from lot B.
It, is that in fact a mobile home there in four B, Van? I can't tell.
Uh, there's, there are no mobile homes on lot four B. There's some accessory buildings. And there, there is a mobile home right behind it, but it'll have to be moved as well in order to get the forty feet from it, from the single family lot lot.
Okay, those two, man, those two on the front will need to be moved away from plot B also.
They'll, pretty much all need to be moved except for the one in the middle of the, and if they can leave that one there. There's one in the middle of the, the block four A. There's two actually. They might be able to leave those there. It just depends on where they can put the other one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven have to be moved.
Man, I think I pretty well have this, uh, but is there a way for you to use a pointer, uh, on, on, on a, a, a map like this?
Can you see my cursor?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Okay, so what would you like me to point out?
Well, just in, in explaining things, I know you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, there, and, and lot four B, uh, here, there's, there are no mobile homes. There's just accessory buildings and nothing's gonna move on this lot. This, this mobile home and all the rest of these mobile homes down here will have to be relocated. These two may be able to stay where they are because they have the setback requirement. So it's just a question of where they have to move these uh, seven or all of them to shuffle around to get them where they need to be. But they'll definitely have to move seven, this one and all these on the south line.
And those little tiny squares are the septic? Is that correct?
Here's the septic and here's septic. Here.
But they're borrowing, um, you can, you can double up on septic with those.
They, they have been. They're, that, all these structures, I guess, including even the lot four B is, uh.
Four B septic, correct?
Yeah, it, four B is right on the back of it. So it has its own septic. The mobile home park has two septic locations, which is lot four A.
Are there any limitations on the number that, um, that can be joined to one septic system?
There are. It just depends on the health department. That, they're the ones that make the determination whether there's, how many can go on the existing systems.
Okay, thank you. And that's already been approved.
As far as we know, uh, they've been, this mobile home park has been here a long time. So as far as we know, usually the health department does not go out and re-inspect, do they? I don't think they go out and re-inspect.
Unless there's a problem.
Not unless there's a problem or complaint about the existing sanitation, will they go back out?
Is there any reason why they would need to once the mobile homes are moved?
We can't answer that question because their, the health department is the only one can answer that question.
Right. Okay, so under our purview then, it's really the, the setback and the approval of the, of the plat.
Correct.
So uh, any other board members have discussion on, I mean, discussion on, uh, items on it?
Um, let me just real quick. I'm just, I'm interested in Mr. Rowland saying whether or not he's in a big hurry and if so, why?
Well, I think they just tried to sell, you know, the lot four B and lot four A separately, the current owner.
So, uh, did that answer your question, Mr. Hayes? I, I think, you know, my, my discussion on this would be, I, though I had initial hesitation, I, I do, uh, feel comfortable with staff receiving a, a survey, an updated survey that shows that all the existing mobile homes have been moved to within, to meet the requirements of the forty foot setback before they sign off. So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is my thoughts would be, I, I would, uh, I would not have a problem with approving this today as opposed to the motion on the floor, the seconded, uh, by Mrs. Zines and seconded by Mr. Majors, that we defer. It's just mine. As a board member, that's just my discussion. Anybody else has a, have any discussion? All right, I'm gonna call for a vote. We have, we, do we have any updated? Uh, see, Mr. Doin's joined. Thank you, Dexter, and Carl, Boyd Connors. So we now have six board members on the call. Okay, so I'm gonna call for a vote on this, the motion on the floor. And seconded is that we defer, I guess, that we defer this until this matter, until the, uh, updated.
January twenty fifth, planning board meet.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I, I have saw two ayes that I'm aware of. One. Uh, all right, let me, let me go through the list here. Uh, Mr. Doin. Are you for or against the motion on the, on the table? Are you for or against the motion on the, on the uh table to defer? Mr. Doines? Okay, whoa, so it said connected audio. Can you hear me now, Mr. Doines? I see, Mr. Doines, but uh it looks like you're on mute now, I'm not sure that you can hear us. Uh let me, let me go forward, uh Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Okay. Uh Mrs. Zane, you've already, I saw that you voted yes. Mr. Hayes?
Uh no.
Uh Carboy Connors, thank you very yes. Is that right?
S A, aye for me, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Uh Mr. Doines, can you hear me? Well, I was gonna vote no, uh and if Mr. Doines can hear us and votes no, we would have a tie. But um. He's not responding or we're not hearing him respond.
Mr. Chairman, I'll text him and ask him.
Okay. That brings up an interesting question, when we have a tie.
Fails, motion fails if it's tied.
I think it fails. Uh Mr. Doines, let me check again, can you hear me? Let me chat him as well.
I, I just texted him, asked him to.
Okay.
Dexter just texted, he said voted no, but.
Oh, he voted no.
That's why he texted me no, that he voted no. So let's see if we can get him on there, I don't, I don't. No, I don't know why he can't unmute and vote, no, I'm not sure. Can, can you see, can everybody see the screen now?
Hmm, I can't see anything that you're sharing.
Well, we're having some technical issues for some.
Yeah, wait, here, good.
Hey Dexter. Yeah, I was, I've, yeah, it, it shows that you're muted, but we. You know, and I tried to ask you unmute on the screen and I couldn't do it, so I don't know what to say. Here, I'll let you tell them, I'll put you up here by the speaker, so. It text, Dexter's having some de- technical difficulties, so he wants to try to. Tell you how he's voting right now till he can get to another computer.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I'm voting, if, I don't know if you all can hear me, but my, my vote is no on the motion.
Okay, we can hear you, Mr. Doines, so thank you, I appreciate your persistence.
Alright, I'm gonna change computers here and see if that'll help.
Okay, thank you Dexter.
Okay.
And so, for the record, I vote no as well, so that, the three to three, so the motion does not carry. Uh let me, before we move on, is, are there, do we have uh Sam Kaufman? I do not see. And I also do not see Patricia Blick, but she indicated that she would not be on, and Mr. Mr. Wilson is also not on, okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Part, um a parliamentary inquiry.
Sure.
Um, does the chairman vote only to break a tie?
No.
Okay.
No, my understanding from our bylaws, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but the chair does have a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. 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 Chairman, I, I think the chair ju- does just vote in order to break the tie.
Well, then let's pause then.
We have to, have to hold on for a second, yeah.
Yeah, let's please, I'm gonna try to, oh, I'm on the wrong computer. Alright, I'm gonna need to. Oh no, we can go, everybody can go online and go to the Plasky County. Money Commission. Website, and you scroll down to the bottom. Third bottom, it says the planning board bylaws.
We give Dexter another crack at it.
Okay.
So he's been admitted again, so let's see what he's got. The Zoom is not real responsive today. He's, he's muted still, but. Let's see.
Okay, can you, can you hear me now, Van?
Yeah, yes, yes.
It should be, it should be three to two.
I'm reading the ballot.
Just sort of right now. So in section four. I'm sorry, uh uh in section, I'm sorry, article five. Section D four B. It says each mi- each board member, including the chairman, shall be entitled to one vote. No board member shall vote for another board member by proxy. That's what I remembered reading. Uh I think it answers the question on the, on the table. Then, if you felt otherwise, I'd like for you to weigh in.
Well, we thought so, but look again.
Yeah.
I know that you vote in case of a tie, I don't know that, that you don't have the ability to vote whenever you want to. I'm not saying that, I'm not certain of that part.
Uh well, the, the good question on the table is if the chairman only votes.
Right, right.
We're, we're checking.
Mr. Chairman, um just to add to the discussion here, um. According to the Roberts Rules of Order, which our bylaws abide by. Um it, it does state in there somewhere, I'm trying to find it, but. It, in the Roberts Rules of Order, it does state that the chair breaks a tie. Um unless there are some special um rules that we have in our bylaws. Any special um uh rules of order.
Yeah, and that's, this is exactly that, and I, I would think, I would. I would, I would propose it that section, I mean, article five, section. D four B is exactly that. Uh so, Mr. Uh, I mean, Van says the host disabled participant share screen. Uh I was going to share my screen with the bylaws on it, unless you'd like to pull it up.
No. Uh, I don't know, I'm not sure that we can do it. Check it. I'm gonna double check, but I, I see the section you're referring to, it clearly states that you can vote as the chairman.
Um. Mrs. Boyd Connor, if you don't mind, uh I wanna pick on you for a second, being an attorney. If you wouldn't mind, really particularly going to our bylaws and looking at this section and see if you. From a legal perspective, if you see any discrepancy to what I'm saying.
I. Let me log on, um I was remotely. Signed on some, through my phone, but let me go on my desktop, if you give me one sec.
Yes, thank you.
I don't think we're able to share it.
Uh does that mean you have it pulled up? Okay, it looks like you're about to, oh. No, I see the Allen's Highway Gardens.
If you can um select the screen, uh man, you would have to stop sharing screen with that. That one, and then collect, select the one that has the bylaws raised, I can probably be quicker for me to find it.
Okay. Well, but um to your point, I, I was going to share mine.
Oh, okay, yeah, either.
Yeah, one more, yeah, well, whatever. I think that must be in the Zoom meeting. Uh settings.
And I think, um, let me grab my.
Mr. Chairman, I just read them, I can only find one, uh one section that. Refers to your vote and, uh and it says you're entitled to a vote in the section that you call.
Can, can y'all see it now?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So I think you're correct.
Okay, so, yeah, it's article five.
I didn't find anything that contradicted that.
Section D.
My powers.
Am I looking at the right section, Eric?
No, a little bit further down, section D, I think you're in B, C, D, yeah.
Is it B?
No, D, it, David, um so. Uh and then number four, B, right there.
But there it is.
Special rules of procedures, each board member, including the chairman, shall be entitled to one vote.
There you go.
Shall vote for another board member by proxy. And so, it's a very good question, Mrs. Zane, I did. Vote like it because I had remembered reading this and specifically that it was a special rule in our bylaws that. I remember in, on other board, I've searched on where the chairman did not vote unless there was a tie. Um and uh, but this was a special call, and I assume it's because it's a. Oh, I don't, I don't need to conjecture, but does, does anybody disagree with this? Special rule or the interpretation?
I think, I think the special rules of procedure would govern. Where um in, in matters where it's specific on how the procedure would. Would be, would proceed, so in, you know, if the, if the bylaws are silent on procedure. I think we would defer to Robert Rules of Order, uh but if it's not silent. On, on procedure, I think we would, you know, we defer to our bylaws, which is our governing. Um. What is, governs us, so. Um, so that, that, I would think that rule would be take precedent of a rule, Robert Rules of Order.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, thank you.
Okay, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think the custom has been that the chairman didn't vote. And a chairperson didn't vote unless there was a tie, but that's just by the custom of the board.
I agree, and I prefer to vote last anyway, um so, but in this case, we have six. Uh voting members present, it had the calls for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh then I'm going, unless anybody has the other objections, I'm going to rule that that motion did not carry. Um so then, uh I will entertain a motion on Allen's Highway Greens. Uh Gardens Lot four A and four B final plat. Motion either way, uh right now, let's, let's go back, we've had a lot of questions, so let's go back to what, what, what are we talking about? So what we're talking about is uh an application. That uh is being requested for plat for uh the, yes, for A. To be approved. Um uh that the plat be seg- segmented into uh four A as, as Van is showing now, four A and four B. So that four B can be conveyed. Um and staff is supportive of that, as long as there's, um but before they sign off. They must have, in their possession, a survey showing that all of the existing mobile homes. Do in fact meet the forty foot setback. So I'm entertaining a motion either for or against their application.
I uh, I, I move uh that we approve the uh flat subject to staff approval.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, and the, and the, and the variance for lot four B.
How, how'd you know that I was gonna say that?
No, I did this guess, I guess.
Okay, so, uh so you, in your motion, um Mr. Hayes, can you restate it?
Yeah, I move that we uh approve the flat subject to uh the uh staff approving. The uh setback uh on the trailers and also the variance uh on the uh four uh B. Or, yeah, four B, I guess.
And Mr. Doines, I know that you were about to um second that, but Mr. McClennan, I think I've gotten. Uh things out of, out of uh uh precedence here, have we, in the past, we have. We have voted on variant request first, right, before we.
Yes.
You wanna separate those?
I, I think to be consistent with what we've done in the past, Mr. Hayes, I, I would, um so. Um I think what got me um uh off track there was we actually did have a. A motion on the table that the applicant, that the application be, be pushed, but. Now that that uh is off the table, then I would like to, to go back to our normal procedure in discussing. And voting on the requested variance. In this case, Van, can you? For convenience here, can you restate the variance being requested on plot, on lot four B?
Yes, the applicant, the, the setback, the front yard setback requirement is twenty five feet. Yes, the, the, the setback, the front yard setback requirement is twenty five feet. The applicant is requesting a three foot variance, so they're requesting a three foot variance from the twenty five foot front yard setback.
And then using your cursor, can you show us the front? The front is on, is on the east side, right?
That's right, it's on the road right away.
So the house is already there.
Correct. Everything's here.
So if we didn't approve this, they'd have to move their house.
Correct. You could, you couldn't approve the plat unless you approved it. That's correct.
I know we approved a variance with a three foot setback.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I heard two. I heard Mr. Hayes and I think Mr. Dorn. Do I hear, do I have any nays?
No.
Okay, I heard one. But I, I've only heard three voices, so let me, let me go back. Okay, so I've got a yes from Mr. Dorn and a yes from Mr. Hayes and a no from Mrs. Ains. So, Mr. Majors, really? Yes, on the variance for request for four B or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Cara Connors. I'm gonna vote, can I abstain? I don't want to vote yes or no. I just, I want to abstain from this because I feel like it needs to. I don't want to vote yes because I think it's, it hasn't met the requirements under the requirements required by the statute for a plat, a final plat. I know this vote is for subject to the staff approval, but I think to get to Miss Ains's concerns, when the plat is presented, it should be ready for approval. Subject to some type of contingencies and so that's just, that's my position, so I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Will abstain, okay. So then we have and then the yes, yes. Okay, so the, the yeses are Mr. Dorn, Mr. Majors, Mr. Hayes and Mr. McDaniel. So the motion carries on the variance request for a lot for B. Four to, four to one with one abstain, that's correct. Okay, now that the variance request has been approved, now I entertain a motion either for or against Allen's Highway, the application for Allen's Highway Gardens Lot four A and four B final plat.
I move for adoption of a contingent on staff approval of the conclusion or the, the actual finishing and the survey being done showing that the that the mobile homes have been, has indeed been moved and, and obviously certified by the staff and then report to us at the next meeting as to the status of this plat.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. I see Mr. Dorn and Mr. Hayes and Mr. Majors for you, a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mrs. Ains?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, and so we have four yeses. I'm sorry, I vote yes, so that's, that's four. Mrs. Connors, I'm not sure, Boyd Connors, I'm not sure if you wanted to abstain.
Yes, I, I want to maintain my abstain.
Okay, alright. Alright, so the vote, there is again four to one with one thing, the motion carries. Okay, new business, Darce subdivision tracks one and two final plat.
Yes, this is a two lot final, two lot final plat. Divide one, it's a replat of one lot into two. Apken has provided us everything we need to recommend approvals filed. We've received the sewer is available to the site, so there's no septic testing required, soil testing. They provide this with AutoCAD and the staff recommends approvals file.
I'll entertain a motion on Darce subdivision tracks one and two final plat.
I'm like a motion, we accept it.
Thank you, Mr. Majors, do I hear a second?
Second, yes.
Uh, thank Mr. Hayes, inch, inch in there, Mr. Dorn. Any further discussion?
There is nothing outstanding on this one whatsoever.
Correct.
Wonderful.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interject, Van, in, in deference, I think Christie does have a point. And in deference to that point, so we can do everything to avoid, we'll say an issue like this, because I'm sure it would be likely to come up again. If you would encourage those who are filing plats, that if there are any contingencies, that they work very hard to try to we'll say, deal with those contingencies prior to us dealing with them. I mean, we may very well come up with the same answer. But, you know, I think, you know, Christie has a point. I've always been on the mind to try to keep government as, we'll say, as timely as possible and and yet I can still see her, her reasoning behind her position.
Thank you, Mayor Hane.
Will do.
As another board member, I, I don't disagree. Is this, and we've discussed this at length, everybody, over the last several months. So is this common, like for the city? Do they do this, Van? Do you know?
Oh, all the time. In fact, many of theirs, they're, don't go to the planning commission, but in this case, it was a little bit unusual because the applicant was somewhat resistant to having to move the mobile homes until they, I think they were convinced that the staff was not going to support it in this, in that, in, in that condition and so, but once they realized that we probably wouldn't support it, then the board most likely might not also and they decided to, to move them because they had the room to do it, and so they're doing it. So it's a win.
So for the record, I, I agree with Mr. Hayes and, and Mrs. Ains in general. I just feel like if, if we were a weekly or biweekly meeting, I'd, I'd probably feel more just as one board member, I'd probably feel a little bit differently about it.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a situation out here in the county that I wanted to give an example of, which is why I'm, I'm, I lean against the soft approvals. And I don't know if this is the time to discuss that, or if you would rather me discuss it after the notification amendment.
Um, why don't we hold off? That's something that we can, I appreciate the, the discussion item and I'd like to do justice, but we do have another, another item on the agenda. Okay. So let's move on to other business in proposed subdivision ordinance amendment regarding notification requirements.
Yes, this is the latest proposal, the revised proposal from the last time we met.
Okay, and so strike throughs are where language has been removed, yellow highlights are new proposed language added. And the green highlight, I saw that was community compromise, so that's, that's like a change since the last time we thought, Mrs. Ains, is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so then is it accurate to say, I mean, we'll go back over them, but is it accurate to say that everything in the, in yellow is proposed and it is also it has been seen by the, by the board, it, it did not change?
Well, no, the board has hopefully seen it. However, I did send an email before this meeting. Hopefully everyone has received it and, and read it, but I did add some new language since last time. That is yellow highlight.
Okay, alright, then we'll cover that when we, when we go through it.
Okay.
Alright, so then on the top here, the applicant subdivider shall be required to provide notice for all major subdivision applications, all applications that seek a variance from the standards of this ordinance and all applications that seek a variance from the flood hazard ordinance. Okay, any? Go ahead, Mrs. Ains, if you like.
Yes, the flood variant, the flood hazard ordinance language was suggested by Mr. McClendon when I spoke with him over the phone.
Is the staff supportive of this language because, and that was added because on the rare, and I mean extremely rare occasion that someone would ask for a variance from the flood hazard ordinance, it would come to the planning board.
Okay, any questions on this proposed change before we move on? Okay, then let's see, I mean, I, I would probably should have the bold art comments instead of language to be considered, so let me go back. Note about adding to code, suggest pulling it out of the, or of the variance section, placing in a new section under general provisions. Chapter one, since this, since the suggested changes are not just for applications seeking a variance or whatever staff recommends. I believe we covered that last time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, but then the additional note about new flood hazard warden, warden wording, Director McClendon recommended to add language. Okay, so thank you for that comment, Mrs. Ains. Okay, so continuing on, note about number of days, speaking with Mr. McClendon regarding thirty days, he indicated it was doable if the board met nine versus twelve times a year. It would have the added benefit of relieving conflicts, for example, with the court and court meetings, which are scheduled on the same day usually. The community strongly supports thirty days, six days is entirely inadequate for notice. So, Mr. McClendon, would you like to share with us staff's opinion on this?
Well, the staff's opinion is if, if we're going to go around the road of thirty day timeframe, that it's, it conflicts with the way that our current scheduling is set up and and where the staff is supportive of the thirty days, if, if that's what the board would like to do. But again, if we do the thirty days, we're gonna have to, once if and when it ever is adopted by the court and court, we'll have to change our schedule for the balance of the year because we won't be able to do it under a thirty day turnaround, on the normal thirty day filing deadline. So, and the staff supportive of this, that means there's three less meetings that the planning board has to attend. And it's not onerous really for an applicant to file and have forty five days total instead of thirty because typically, we have a, we have a pretty short term, we have a very short turnaround time for a planning agency already, so that would, if we're gonna have additional notice requirements, then the time to do, the extra time would probably be beneficial.
The only question I have, Van, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Please.
Is, I'm, I'm making an assumption that then that would we'll say if we have nine meetings instead of twelve, then we're gonna have, likely to have a, a, a longer agenda than we have with twelve meetings.
Probably so.
And I believe Mr. McClendon had said that it would be probably more substantial of meetings to get, to get, have more items on it, more meaningful.
Well, one, one of the things, if I could go on, Mr. Chairman, is, is I know that we, we got a quorum plus one this time. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful that if we, we do this, and I certainly don't oppose it, that we make every effort to have as, have, obviously a minimum of quorum. Because if we don't have a quorum, you know, then the nine becomes eight and then we really start stacking up. So that's the only thing I worry a little bit about reducing it to eight is, or nine, rather, is, is, you know, the lack of a quorum at some point. We have run into that, but if we run into that, then we can perhaps address it again, if that's the case. And so I would encourage everybody who votes for this to vote for themselves to attend as many meetings as, as humanly possible.
Um, thank you, Mr. Hayes and Mrs. Ains. Van is, has staff if it's, if we were to keep it at twelve times, our meeting scheduled at twelve times a year, do you know how many, how many days notice would be required in order for us to meet twelve times a year and still?
Well, you couldn't do the thirty, you, you might be able to do fifteen, probably fifteen.
Oh. Okay. Are there, is there any comments? Let me open it up from, from outside the board as well. I know there are several people. It looks like we've got fourteen attendees today. Anybody have a? Are there, do we have any developers on, anybody outside? There's, I can't see you all still here. Let's see, looks like Mr. Ferguson. If we were to meet nine times instead of twelve, do you have any feedback for us to consider, Mr. Ferguson? I can.
Okay. Mr. White had to leave, so I'm using his computer. No, not, not necessarily. I think Mayor Hayes' point, it's just you'll probably end up having fewer meetings than you think, because it is, you know, hard to get a quorum sometimes, so.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate what you people do, so I don't really think I'm gonna, I mean, it'll slow things down, but that's really a lot. But I mean, I'm not, you know, giving up my time like you are, so.
Alright, thank you, Ferguson. Anybody else like to share an opinion? Okay, alright, so then let's move on. A note of, about, thank you, Mr. Ferguson, if I didn't thank you already. Note about distance. After the twelve twenty three twenty, I'm sorry, eleven twenty three twenty one meeting, the community voiced they would be okay with thirteen hundred feet as a compromise to the half mile as long as physical signage is posted large enough to be seen from the road for thirty days. And so I can see, alright. And so I believe thirteen hundred feet, that's a, that's roughly, is that roughly a quarter mile? Yeah. Okay. Alright, I know there was extensive conversation. All right, um, I know there was extensive conversation during our November meeting. About, uh, Mr. Doin, I think you called out some areas that you're familiar with where a half a mile would literally be. I think you said seven hundred and something notifications. I wonder what that would be for thirteen hundred.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have addressed that concern.
Okay, oh, Mr. Doin. Did, did you have a response, Mr. Doin?
I, well, yeah, let me give my example and then I'll let Ms. Ains address it. Um, yes, I, I, at the half mile lots, and you do the math on the fees, it came out to, uh, twenty-four thousand five oh six. So I went back when I saw the thirteen, um, hundred feet roughly quarter mile. And did the same math, it was about, it was still about four hundred lots in that radius. That turns out to be twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. So it still can get quite expensive based on the, on location of the property.
But, Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, and I do understand the, the, the different areas that. In there are some parts of the county where your nearest neighbor is a quarter mile away. Uh, and so it doesn't become as, as expensive. As it is in other parts of the, of the county, so. Uh, you know, thirteen thousand dollars based on the example I gave last week instead of twenty-four thousand is still quite a bit of, of money for the, the notifications.
Okay, so we, we had significant discussion about that, so I wanted to bring it up. Miss Ains, did you have a response prepared for that?
Uh, yes, I would like to hear what Mr. McClendon was gonna say first, if that's all right.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so, um, I think we've have a real life example. Today, we had an, an application before the board. For those variances at that existing non-conforming mobile home park. So, we ran some numbers, if I can get it to move, uh, let me see if it'll move, there we go. Here we go. So there you go, that was the existing ex- example for today, um, you can see. Thirteen hundred feet, the current proposal. Uh, eighty-one properties within thirteen hundred feet. And that's a two thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. And then, in the example where we have five hundred foot notification requirement. And that comes out to eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents. And lastly, uh, two hundred feet, which comes out to four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy cents. So we can see. Um, it, the price kind of ramps up there on. Just as an aside, so that you know, the typical notification requirements like in the city of Little Rock. For a rezoning, which is typically what causes the greatest amount of concern in the city is two hundred feet. A radius of the property. So I did, we, we just thought that this would be a good opportunity to see. A real life example that came before the board and what the different, uh, set, uh, radius requirements would cost in terms of notification.
Wonderful, thank you.
That's very helpful. Um, thank you, Ben, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Chairman, on the two hundred foot notification for the city of Little Rock. I did talk to the city of Little Rock about that. And I did know about the two hundred foot and they indicated that that is essentially a budding. So it's not really getting anything for the people in the rural areas. And, um, there was a, um, a lengthy discussion, as you mentioned last time. About the cost, and I did call the Roland Post Office. And the certified mailing with return receipt is seven hu- seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, and then I talked with Mr. McClendon. And added to that cost is the abstract company's twenty-five dollars per household fee. And that brought it to the thirty-two, thirty-three cost that Mr. McClendon gave the example last time. This second draft, um, which stipulates less than what we did last time, so the community is making a compromise here. From a half mile to a quarter mile. And, uh, now cited below also, I have made a change that the applicant. Would be able to utilize a combination of, uh, notification methods, not either one or the other. So I, we're hoping that this will, um, quell the cost concern. Um, that the applicant could use the combination of walk around and certified mailings if they wished. And I think it would be win-win for the community. And for the applicant.
How, how do we know, uh, Christie, uh, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please.
Uh, how, how do we know, I, 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 I can't see the exact wording because it's too small, but how? How will we know which ro- which people have been notified via walk around? Is there, is that addressed in there?
Well, Mr. McClendon can probably answer that. There, there is actually a note, a notice, there's a notice that, um, that is provided by staff.
Right.
Well, I, I'm just thinking that, you know, that, that some affidavit by somebody saying that. Or something, I, how, how are you gonna check to see whether the walk around and whoever does it? Uh, is, uh, is, is, makes a report or are you?
Yes, yes, we will. There's an affidavit that ultimately the applicant will have to provide, but we'll have the abstract list and they'll have a form. That they get signed off by the folks that they, uh, go to, uh, in person. There'll still be a twenty-five dollar abstract fee to discover who that person is, but it'll lemons, it'll limit. Eliminate seven dollars and thirty-eight cents on that particular owner.
And Mr. McClendon, um, in our conversation, you had mentioned to me that this was doable. That they could do an either or, they could, I think, uh, if I understood you correctly, that it was something that was definitely doable. That they could choose a walk around method or they could choose. Uh, and they could choose a certified mailing notice if they wish.
Correct, they, they could do that, they could have either choice, but they still have to do it, they'll have to walk it around. Yeah, they could save up to. Seven dollars and thirty-eight cents by having someone sign as being notified rather than a certified return receipt letter.
They could provide you with some certified mail notices. And they could provide you with some walk around, uh, signatures, uh, as a completed, um, application.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What requirements? Are there any requirements of the person performing the walk around? Is that, and anybody?
It's, I, I don't think it has to be, the, the applicant has to provide the affidavit saying that they've done what they're supposed to. We have, they also have to revise an abstract list of who those people to be notified are. And then that will have the applicant's affidavit saying that the people that signed it. Are the ones that actually signed it. So I guess we have to take, take into consideration whether or not the applicant is telling the truth. I don't guess, I don't guess we know that for a fact.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, the community also in another compromise. On the certified mail notice return receipt requested, we completely struck out the section that it was, um, complete. When the mail is deli- delivered and the receipt signed within ten, ten working days. And that failure by the owner to mail the return receipt would require the applicant to provide a wa- a walk around notice. And we scratched that whole thing. And we felt that the, um, the signed affidavit by the applicant was. Sufficient enough that they've done their due diligence.
So, uh, uh, I'm sorry, does somebody else have something?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh. You know, one of the things that, that, that I think, obviously, we're trying to do is to ensure that people have received notice and, uh, and. I know there's a lot of times that people might very well knock on doors. And for one reason or another, they may not be at home, or if they're home, they won't come to the door. Uh, I, I would also like to see some method, uh, for the walk around to leave. A notice with maybe a return postcard, uh, that would explain what. You know, the, uh, uh, what's going on and, uh, and, and ask them to drop that postcard in the mail. Uh, indicating that they had received notice or something to that effect, because I, I do see. Uh, some difficulty, but I still think that there ought to be an alternative. Uh, for them to, uh, to be able to respond to, to a walk around if they're not at home.
That goes to what Mrs. Ains was just saying about the, the mailed version, uh, the applicant is not penalized if they don't mail it back, if it's not mailed back in.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so it's, hey, to your point, though, Mr. Hayes, is allow something for the walk around as well.
Uh, yeah, I, I would, you know, I mean, you, you could tell them that, you know, that, uh, have a date on the time that they dropped it off. And indicate that if they didn't respond within, well, ten days, uh, that they're, uh, you know, that, that, uh. That they, uh, would be considered notified. Or something to that effect. So it's similar to what, you know, Christie did on the other. I don't have any wording to amend it, but, you know, if there's a sense of the, of the board that, you know, giving that opportunity to people who don't come to the door or who are, aren't at home. Should a walk around take place, that would, that would give, uh, uh, us, uh. An opportunity to know that those people, if they didn't answer at all, you know, would consider to be notified, uh, that the, uh. That the applicant or whoever they might hire was, uh, uh, did knock on the door and did leave. Uh, a certificate on such and such a day and, uh, and, and there'd be a mechanic. Uh, that, uh, you know, twenty-five or whatever the cost of postage, pre, pre postage, uh, uh, card. You know, indicating that they were notified. Like, you know, something just to make it easy for both the applicant as well as, uh, to have some effort, uh, when somebody's not there or they don't come to the door.
Mr. McClendon, is that something that staff could, uh, create a, um, for the walk around notice? Is to have a postcard that they could leave? You can't put things in mailboxes because, um, that's against the law. But, um, maybe they could leave it on, uh, the door. Um, or, or somewhere where the applicant could, uh, or the, um, owner. Could have something like if you don't return this within ten days, you consider yourself notified.
I guess, I guess you could, I mean, um. I mean, you can, you can leave anything stuck on the door you want, I suppose, um. Whether they do anything with it or not, I don't know, so.
So there's no current process, okay. There's no current process with a walk around notice for anything like that?
No, you either do a certified return receipt or you get somebody to sign it. And I, my get, my, if I was doing it, I would, I would, uh, uh. If I was gonna do the walk around, I'd hit as many of them as quickly as possible. And if they didn't respond, then I'd send out the certified return receipt letter to them.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I would do.
Mm-hmm.
Because you've already paid the twenty-five to find out who everybody was.
That's correct.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a, I have a question, um, in an example of the walk around, uh, what happens if you, um. Take the notice, you take it to the home and the person that lives there is a renter, they're not the property owner. So then what does the walk around person do? It, does it suffice to leave that notice with the renter? And count on them to get it to the owner?
Well, well, the abstract list of owners will not necessarily be owners, it's gonna be who pays the property tax on that property. So in some cases, it won't, it'll be, most cases, it's likely to be the owner, but some cases it could be an LLC or a property management company, or who knows what, we don't know.
Right, but I guess my question is, d- does it suffice to leave it to, to whoever answers the door, I guess, at, at that, uh, residence?
Yes, that's a question for.
But, uh. It's the, it's the owner, it's, it says, or the person that the abstract, the name that the abstract company gave you, that's who. You have to get to sign it at that address. And if they're not there or they're gone, then you up, you, you ought to do it on the front end and send them a certified return receipt letter. And then you, you've got yourself covered. Because otherwise, what's gonna happen here is you're gonna have endless deferrals of people and their proposals, and that's not what you want.
Correct, and, and, and that's my entire point. And, and of course, I, I prefer the certified letters, let the US Postal Service take care of that, but I do understand the option for the, for the walk around. Um, and I have one other follow-up, I guess, concern. And, Miss Ains, thank you for, um, giving that example of the cost to notify people there in the Roland area. And, and, and that, that, that amount does seem reasonable and, and even affordable. But since this is going to be a countywide ordinance that will apply to every situation. My concern is still, as I stated last week, what about? Property owners, county property owners who are wanting to subdivide their land that is adjacent to densely populated. Areas with numerous and even hundreds of lots, is it? Does, are we creating an unfair burden upon them? Back to my example, four hundred lots costing thirteen thousand dollars for the certified notices. That, that's the, the point I think we need to, to keep in mind. If, if we want to, to, uh, put that kind of burden upon people who are developing property as, as in the example of that Van gave today. If those, if that two lot subdivision was against a densely populated subdivision. Would it have been fair to charge them thirteen thousand dollars to, to go through their process?
Thank you, Commissioner Doin, yes, um, that seven thirty-eight amount that I, I quoted, I think that's probably for every. Area because that's from the post office. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McClendon, but I don't think there's a different rate. For, um, different areas in, in terms of mailing.
I think that's correct, seven thirty-eight for every return receipt.
Okay.
Certified letter.
And then again, to try to address this cost concern, we did mention. That there's a combination of methods that they can, they can do, uh, as Mr. McClendon mentioned. You could, you could do as many rock walk arounds as possible, and then any of those that you can't get, you send a, a certified mail notice. Return receipt requested, you know, I don't think any process is gonna be absolutely perfect. Um, but this, uh, we also need to take into consideration the people of the area. Their stakeholders as well, they pay ta- taxes. And, um, they need to be properly notified in, in the rural areas and. And that's the whole purpose of these changes was to, to give the people an advantage for a change. That they could, they could be notified, um, and trying not to overburden the applicant. And so I'm hoping that these compromises will be, um. Palpable to the group. Um. Because we feel that less than a quarter mile is. Is a great compromise for, for the rural area.
So I think, I, just my input here is I think it's possible to actually be in agreement on both, on both sides of this conversation because. Uh, thank Mr., for example, Mr. Doin, I think in our November meeting, Mr. Doin, keep me honest. I think you were in supportive of the broader notification area. Uh, but it did go back to the point that even just the twenty-five dollars per property. Uh, to get those, to get the list. If you have four hundred pieces of property, that's ten thousand dollars. And that's in, that's a densely populated area that Mr. Doin was, was familiar with as opposed to. Property out west where that may literally be, you know, fifteen or twenty different properties because of the. The, the more, the less density. Well, I, I think it's possible to be in agreement with both sides in this conversation. Um, I, I, and, and, you know. I I've got a, I've got a, you know, just as one board member, I've got a concern. I share Doc uh Mr. Dwyane's concern in the did more densely uh populated areas. Um just the thought of there being four hundred pieces of property there and and it costs somebody ten thousand dollars as opposed to out west, if it were a handful, it would be a fraction of that amount just to get the list.
But let me throw out an idea, uh if I can, uh that that uh that we put a a cap on the uh cost that someone would have to spend, like we'll say twenty five hundred dollars. Uh and that within that twenty five hundred dollar area that uh that those that are closest until they reach that cap are the ones that are gonna be notified either to walk around or uh through, because yeah, I mean, I yeah, that's the only way I can come up with that, that you could uh maybe help address Dexter's point as well as uh as well as Christie's point, is find a cap for not to exceed in terms of their cost a certain amount that may seem to be reasonable and that uh, you know, in Dexter's four hundred uh, you know, maybe that twenty five hundred dollars would cover, you know, fourth, and that would be those that were in and as uh, you know, the closest to the the uh, you know, the uh applicant's request. That's the only other way I could think of that you can address cost is is to put a cap on it and have the cap applied when it when it when it should, when it would apply uh to to notify those that were closest to the applicant's request.
So, Mr. McLendon, the twenty five dollars fee, could you explain a little bit more of that? And and who who chooses which act abstract company? W- w- could you, wait, let me just stop there. Could you, could you uh familiarize us again with that process? So if I'm an applicant, I go to any abstract company?
That's correct.
Okay, and the twenty five dollar charge, is that just, that's just a widely accepted?
That's a pretty standard charge. And if you can, if you can beat it, I would go to that one, whatever that is. There's multiple abstract companies, you know?
What about from the uh assessor's office?
What what about?
Um obtaining um the addresses from from the assessor's office. I think I saw that somewhere, um it's not even an application we had today. But that cost.
Yeah, that's the only way to limit the cost. There's only two ways to limit this cost. One is to somehow get the abstract company out of it. And or limit the distance in which you notify. Two hundred feet is still gonna cost people money. And I I mean, for somebody doing a five lot subdivision somewhere out there on Republican Road to have to pay twenty five hundred dollars even or eight hundred dollars even to just to notify people and put up a sign, it's just, to me, it's 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 excessive and it 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 has diminished the return on what's going on. It it limits and minimizes development potential in the county. I don't think that's what anybody wants.
No, and so to your point, Mr. McLendon, that's where I was going to, is the the twenty five dollars per per notification in the address. Um that that's, you know, that that's three and a half, almost four times more than just the note, you know, than the the seven dollars and thirty eight cents for the post office. Um if there I I would, I would just have to believe that there's another option, uh as Mrs. Eames noticed, I mean, mentioned, uh maybe the assessor's office where that that cost could be mitigated. Um because it, I I couldn't agree more. I think it's excessive. Uh and I think it puts a a lot more burden on people that have property um in a densely populated area just just because of their location. Um. So.
Would you like me to research? Oh.
I had a question. I mean, I I do understand what you're saying about the, you know, urban areas and the cost there. Well, can't you have a cap on urban areas but not in the rural areas? Because the rural areas really need to be notified. Uh you know, it's it and making it two hundred feet, that's the same problem that we had. So, you know, and it's important to have current tax records as well because um people were notified and they hadn't lived at that address for three years. So that's another issue that's very important. It has to be current information, not just any tax information.
Oh, who's the best source for this to be current? Is it?
Well, the assessors is a good place to start. I've also looked at things you can find addresses on the um the land map. It shows the parcels. It gives you the information. It gives you people's names, addresses. And as far as I know, that's also done according to current current tax records. Um I'm not a hundred percent, but you can find the names. It's not hard.
So then, um I I don't want to speak for the entire group, I want to throw this out there just to move the the media of the discussion along. Uh it sounds like it would be good for this for this group to have additional options to consider as opposed to the twenty five dollars per property uh in addition to the seven dollars and thirty eight cents. Um um then, would you be open to connecting with or finding maybe the county attorney or someone to contact uh the the county assessor's office? And making some inquiry as to um a more equitable solution in coming up with the list?
Um well, yeah, but the assess, here's the, here's the issue, um an issue, but I I think the 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 only way to increase the distance for the notification requirement is to use a reasonable way to do it, is to use some sort of assessor's office of property owner tax records. Because uh it eliminates that cost. I mean, the person can go down there and do it, they'll have to get a map and they'll have to draw a radius, uh you know, and and then have to figure out who it is. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna take some legwork. Uh and they might, they, I don't know if they could get that done at a cheaper price or find somebody to do it, I don't know. Uh but they could do that and have and still maintain maybe a greater distance other than maybe even the five hundred feet or even a thousand or whatever it might be. Um the because it would not be an excessive cost except for if you it's a, there's a lot of legwork. If you had like a property near College Station or get the paper platted Roland community, there's gonna be a lot of owners. Um uh. So it it's 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 less, it's it's an owner's requirement on some people. It would be a relatively easy requirement on others. It's just, it's just the way it is. It's the nature of the beast. So yeah, and the the assessors' records are, they're really not timely, but they're the best thing we have. They're probably four months behind or something, three or four months behind. So but I mean, you 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 get you get the list and uh you draw a radius on a map and get that number, those people and their addresses and you either send out a certified letter or you do the walk around. It's if you could do it for almost nothing, if you can walk it to door, door to door, you know?
Well, but let me, let me be methodical about that because I I I think when you say you can draw the, I I my in my mind, I was wondering if the assessor's office could simply, I don't know that they don't have a tool that you could put in a location and just easily come up with a list and provide. I I don't know that they don't. Do you?
No, I I don't know whether they could have.
Let let me, Mr. Chair.
I just might. I I don't know. I I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I I would agree that twenty five dollars is the big lick and and to me, the assessor is a is a public official funded by the taxpayers. Uh we want development in the county as well as within the municipalities. You know, the problem might be is if a rural area abutted, you know, I mean, you gotta how would we define rural versus urban uh in city limits, out of city limits? But you could also have a fairly significant development uh that is out of city limits. So my my difficulty is determining what's urban and rural. Uh you could have a a four or five lot, like Van said. Uh you know, somebody wants to do something with four or four or five lots and they're right next to a municipal area that's got, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred homes. So I I would think that that, you know, that that to me, you know, we we ought to try before we vote to find a cheaper way for an applicant to be able to knock that twenty five dollars down. Uh and if the assessor can do it, uh you know, I'd prefer waiting to vote on this until we find out whether the assessor or there may be other alternatives, the treasurer. Uh however, and and what kind of software that they might have that could benefit, you know, that twenty five dollar uh hit in the head.
And that's that's exactly where my head was too. Anybody else?
Yes, um I I was wondering if if we offered um options, then we could allow the applicant to choose uh what's best for them. So if we do this research about the assessor, using the assessor record and they can draw their own map, like Mr. McLendon said, problem solved. They can do it themselves if they have the resources. Um if if not, then they can choose to use the abstract firm like they've always been using. Um so maybe if we we work in some options in the code for them to pick and choose uh what they put on their plate, then uh then we could probably resolve this.
Okay, Mr. Dwyane?
I I was just gonna add, I I I agree with with everything I'm I'm hearing about providing options. Uh I would like for staff to investigate the ordinance, though, that that requires the or states using an abstract company to obtain that certified list uh to make sure that um it will allow um individuals to create that list themselves. It's been my experience with the city of Little Rock that they're wanting it's certified because it will, the certification from guarantees that all of the uh uh property owners within that distance have been uh identified.
Right, I would I would think so too. Um so um I would really like to hear from, I I I I just can't get away from the fact that we're talking about county business here and we have a county assessor's office and I would like to um encourage, if not challenge, the county assessor's office to help us out here. Uh and come up with an equitable equitable solution. Um so, um, Mr. McLendon, I'd I'd like to ask staff to reach out, maybe if you need the county attorney or the judges, you know, to the judge weigh in or something and talk to the county assessor and uh try to come up with an equitable solution for these more densely populated areas coming up with the list.
Yeah, uh we can certainly make an inquiry and see what 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 uh how she feels. She's an elected official, so she has her own mind.
Sure.
And so, uh, yeah, we'll certainly uh inquire as to what she might be able to do or not do with regard to something like this.
Okay.
We'll let you know next meeting, I guess.
Okay, that's great. If you find out anything in the interim, I I I'd be interested to know if you'd like to email it out. We won't.
Okay, yeah, if we get something, we'll, before then, we'll let you know.
Okay, all right. So then moving on, um let's see. Uh note about this is, see, so note about the subdivision applicants, applications affidavit for notices. Changing the distance in this code will necessitate a change to the wording of the affidavit. Affidavit, I hereby certify that I have notified all the, and it's stricken, abutting property owners of record of the above property, that subject property is being considered for subdivision and that a public hearing is to be held by the Plasky County Planning Board at the time and place described above. So the change there is abutting would be stricken out.
Yes.
Yeah, so I was just a suggestion. Um I noticed that in my research that that would need to be changed. And I'm sure the staff will probably go through that document and other documents and make their appropriate changes, I'm assuming.
This the staff in this language, we would, we would also add that after the after being considered for, we would put major subdivision comma or a variance request and that a public hearing. So we need to make sure that that language is in there too. Because that's what the affidavit is for.
Okay, thank you. Any any questions there?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I I have a question. What is the definition of a major subdivision? Is the, is there a quantity that's associated with that or a maximum?
Four lots or more, Mr. Dwyane, four lots or more.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh yes, uh Mr. Wyatt or Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. I I'm sorry, I don't really understand this. So if um if you bought a um piece of land and you wanted to develop it, does that mean that that every time you put in a new phase, you would have to recontact the same people that you started with in the first phase? If I if I'm making that clear, and I may not be. But.
I don't know, I think you are.
Yeah, you you can do a a massive master plan, but how like typically works is you you might purchase something and then you might purchase the one adjacent to it. I'm just, the the numbers would be staggering. Um and I'm thankful we're gonna look at, you know, at the uh um assessor's office. Um and I hope, just one final thing, I hope that as we're looking for solutions here, we would minimize the uh the walk around. This that's really more from a safety standpoint. I'm not sure that everybody likes someone coming to their home. Um you know, I mean, if you take this time of year, for instance, sir, you know, it's dark pretty early. And um I wouldn't wanna send I mean, I've been blessed with seven children. I wouldn't, even though two of them are males that are over the twenties, I still don't want them going out to people's um homes and it's dark and there's no trespassing signs and there's dogs and so forth. So that's just my little part, but I wanted to try to understand the the how that would work is with every time there's a new phase, would you you know, if you added twenty, twenty five lots or thirty or fifty or whatever? Would you need to read? I I really still don't have a good understanding.
No, I I'm I'm with you, Mr. Ferguson, and being in the database, living in the database world is my 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 primary occupation. Um I I know, you know, I.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And that list would have to be updated. Um even if it was uh within, say, a month, you still have a different location. So then it would have to be certified again through the assessor or whoever came up with that list. So, yeah, I I think you're making a good point. Um each, unless any, you know, Mr. McLendon, you may have a different opinion, but it sounds like to me every time different phase or whatever, it would require a new list.
Right. Yeah, for example, if you had uh fifty acres and you did a preliminary plat for the fifty acres, regardless of whether it's in three phases or one phase or however many phases it might be, you'd have to do the notification process. And then phase one comes along, you're gonna have to do a final plat. That's another application. You're gonna have to do the notification on that. And phase two and phase three, if it's, I guess, if it's more than four lots or if there's a variance requested on any of it.
And that's the current process now, isn't that right, Mr. McLendon?
Uh, the the only variance, the only variances require notice.
So if it's not a a new major subdivision, um and then that would come into play, I would I would guess if they've already done it one time for the major subdivision and then they do a variance and they add on, then they would have to do it for the variant, but not the major subdivision again, because.
No, they they would have, if they, if they had, you know, a hundred lots in the preliminary plat and then they had a phase one was twenty two lots, for example, they'd have to do the notification again for phase one. phase one was twenty-two lots, for example, they'd have to do the notification again for phase one. They'd have to do it the first time for all of it, cause it's, you know, more than, more than four lots. And they would, they would have to do it every time there's a variance, if there were one. If there were no variances, they're still gonna have to do a notification each time the application comes before the board. And that would be like on the final plat on phase one, that's twenty-two lots, let's say, no variances, but there's more than four lots and so it's a new application and a notice would be required.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I had a, a couple of resists rather called me last night that, uh, had a lot in between them. And, um, so if they wanted to bifurcate the lot, would that be, would, would they need to, uh, send mailouts? For that, or certified mail?
Not if there are only three lots and there were no variances.
Well, if there's a, if, if there there would be a variance to the, the covenants and build a certain sub-division.
Well, that, that's for the subdivision. That's, that's not our requirement.
Okay. But if you were to add on lots of founders, understand what you're saying, uh, and, and it would say, your first phase was twenty-five lots, we'll say.
Yeah.
And if you wanted to add another twenty-five lots or something and that wasn't in the master plan, then you would have to go back and, um.
That's correct.
Because sometimes you don't know what, what the market bears. You know, you may miss it and they want bigger lots or smaller lots. It's, you never know. Keep answering my question. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I, you know, just to comment here, I would really like to understand how, if and how the assessor's office could, could assist here. I mean, it's such a bearing on this conversation. So, um, I welcome that information. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Alright, so let's move on. Uh, next number one, the applicant sub divider, uh, shall submit proof that at least, not six, but in this case thirty days' notice uh, of the Plasky County Planning Board's public hearing has been given to all property owners and striking out, including those directly across streets and alleys abutting the boundary. Uh, so let me rephrase that to read. That notice of the Plasky County Planning Board's public hearing has been given to all property owners within a thirteen-hundred-foot radius of the property, which is the subject of the major subdivision or variance request. And is that verbiage, um, would it withstand a challenge? Does, is it clear, uh, in your opinion, Mr. McLennan, that that is within thirteen-hundred-foot radius of the boundaries of the property and not, for example, the centroid? Yeah, has to be right.
It, it, yeah, it would be thirteen, typically it's drawn from from, from the boundary of the property. You know, you go, if it's a, say it's a rectangle, you go thirteen-hundred feet out from each, each of the four corners.
Yep, okay.
Uh, yeah, so we, we're good with the language on number one, uh, subject to whatever that distance is.
Yeah, okay. Any questions on number one?
I get, I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, you know, we work in a lot of municipalities, counties. There's not any place that we work, where it requires a thirty-day notification. The most that I'm aware of is the city of Little Rock is fifteen days, which is typically plenty, but, I mean, that's a long time and and I think, man, if we go to thirty days, it totally disrupts our cycle of our, our meetings. Um, I don't know how we get from six to thirty, just like that.
Yeah, I think we, uh, Mr. Wyatt, you stepped out earlier, but you're right. Uh, it would change our, our meeting cadence from twelve meetings a year to nine.
And what, what, what is the point of so much time? Uh, what, what's the reasoning? What's the thinking there?
Six days. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. I appreciate your question. Um, the six days is wholly inadequate, as you could probably guess. Um, it's not even a week. People go on vacation. They wouldn't be there to get the notification. And, and so I think that, um, taking it out to thirty days is, um, is much more agreeable to the community. It, it allows uh, much more time and it, it is doable, uh, with the board, um, to go to nine meetings versus twelve. So we realize that the city of Little Rock has fifteen days, but we don't always have to do what everyone else does. We can make it better. This would be better for the community. So, um, it's a compromise and, and other ways, we, we've made other compromises in this document. And that is one compromise they're not willing to make at this time.
Again, I'd ask the question, why going from six to thirty is such an extreme jump? Two, I mean, fifteen days, I don't know where that came from. It's basically two weeks. That seems like a very fair amount of time to have those notices out and then the people have two weeks to react to it. Again, there's gotta be a middle, a middle ground. I, I, I wouldn't argue that the six days is, is short. I can tell you, I've loved it over my career, but uh, I'm digging the six days, but I guess if you, if you wanna extend it, thirty just seems extreme to me. And again, there's not any other city or county we work in that anybody has anything near thirty days.
Well, then we could be better than everybody else. Because the, the thirty days is really, um, something the community had asked for. And so um, six days is way too, too small amount of the time. So the thirty days, we feel, we could go out forty-five days if we wanted to, but we decided we wanted the thirty days and we feel like that is very reasonable.
So this gets us back to earlier, um, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Wyatt.
I, I wanted to ask the question, who's we? Miss Ains, when you say we, we have gone out, we, we decided to go out thirty days. Who is, who is we? I can tell you, I can tell you what you're doing is you're hurt, you're, you're hurting the developer. I don't, I'm just curious who we is.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Wyatt. Um, I, I didn't mean to hurt the developer in any way. I, I'm just speaking, um, for the other stakeholders and they, you're a stakeholder and so are the, the taxpayers. And so when I'm talking about we, I'm talking about the community that I've met with out here in Roland, Y, Lillie. And so they have all unanimously, um, asked for the thirty days, um, uh, I, I'm sorry that that's such a speaking point. Could you explain why that, that is disagreeable to you?
Yeah, you know what, y'all, I, I'd like for everybody, let's, let's, uh, let's, um, let's go back to addressing the, the chair. Uh, I, I don't want going back and forth. I think.
I'm sorry.
But Mrs. Ains and, and Mr. Wyatt, I think you've made, made good points and, and I, you know, I think that uh, that the, that the recommendations, uh, or proposals put before, uh, the board by what Mrs. Ains is referring to, the community is appreciated, but it is the board's decision to agree on the final uh, wording of that. And so I think receiving input, I think that it's loud and clear that, um, that there's one opinion that six days, uh, is, is inadequate. And there's another opinion that thirty days is also inadequate from the, from the extreme, both from the extreme perspective. So I think it's incumbent upon the, the board members to take both of those cases, uh, to heart. Uh, I, I, I'd like for us to move on. If that's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, so, um, one, one point that, that, um, I, I was going to, if I didn't mention it earlier, then going back briefly to the nine versus the twelve um, schedule, i- is there, I'm curious, is there a what, I'd like for staff, if you could please look at the, look at the counter before the next meeting and maybe come up with, what is the notification that would be required to, to allow us to continue meeting on the current cadence of once a month?
Fifteen days.
It is fifteen days?
Well, I'm telling you that we could do it with fifteen days.
You can do it within fifteen days.
Yes, we can do it with a fifteen-day notice with the current, but we can't do it any more than that.
Okay, so twenty-one, it would run us into the same issue.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, um, so then, um, I would like, since we would still like to hear back from the assessor's office, um, um, on, um, you know, their ability to help us with the list and save that twenty-five dollars per. Um, I think that's, that's one bit of information. But then I would like for everybody to also consider for the next meeting, um, the, the, the notification timing going from six to thirty. Um, I actually asked everybody to do that, uh, previously and I think that, I'm not saying that we haven't. Um, but at some point in the near future, we're going to have to agree on a, on a notification uh, timing there, that whether it be six, thirty, fifteen, somewhere. Um, so I'd like for us to, to have an earnest conversation about that in the next meeting. Um, any comments, questions on that? Okay, number two, the notice shall inform, wait, we've already read this, right? No, 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 no. The notice shall inform the property owners removing abutting within a thirteen-hundred-foot radius of property, which is the subject of various requests. I'm pausing because that's added, but it's also stricken out.
I, um, I added that as a clarification to add the property in there, which is the subject of the variance request, just to keep it within the same kind of language that is elsewhere.
Okay, a variance request by describing the requested variances and stating the sections of the ordinance receiving said requested variances. Okay, any questions on that before we move on?
But the staff has some clarification on number two.
Okay.
Um, the, it would read, according to the way we might see it, is the notice showing form property owners within a blank foot radius of the property, which is the subject of a major subdivision or variance request or plural. By said notice, as, uh, thus, you know, by just by, by said notice, describe, so hold on here. Uh, got filed up here, the requested variance or variances and state the section of the ordinance receiving said variances.
I think that's consistent with the verbiage above, I believe.
Right.
Okay, any question?
Mr., yes, uh, Mr. Clinton on that change of wording?
Uh.
Would it just be, um, the, within the thirteen-hundred-foot radius of the property, which is the subject of the major subdivision variance request?
It, it's two different things. It might be a major subdivision and it might be a variance request or it might just be one or the other.
Okay, okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on number two? Okay, and if you'll move forward?
Yeah. Just a second. I'm gonna continue. There we go.
Okay. Uh, note about the recert, return receipt, cost concern, return receipt process concern and why return receipt requested. Is this, I had a conversation about it. Is this new information?
We already discussed previously about the cost concern and the return receipt process concern. Um, and then the why return receipt requested was just, um, that it provides additional proof that the mail was delivered to the right person and physically received and signed. I did talk to the, um, city of Little Rock on this one and the only place they require, they do require return receipt requested in the historic district. And so I pulled some of the, um, information, um, I found out uh, and added to the, um, notification amendment from their code. So there's nothing here made up. Um, so there are generally, um, I just mentioned here that the courier, courier will log details about the delivery attempt. There are generally two before a final notice. And that the post office will hold the mail for fifteen days, upon which time the certified mail will be marked as undeliverable and returned to the sender. And, um, return receipt requested adds additional proof the mail was delivered successfully or not. Uh, the post office will mail the sender a green card showing that the signature was indeed collected or the sender will receive the letter back marked undeliverable with the log of delivery attempt. I just put this in here in case anyone didn't know about that process. Um, I know that I needed to, um, to read about it too and, um, it could also have the add, this return receipt requested could also have the added benefit of highlighting possible weaknesses in the notification process by mail and/or the accuracy of property list from abstract firms. Just in an effort for our board to achieve, uh, better notification rate for the county. Better than they are now. Um, so we struck out the language, as I mentioned, as a compromise, uh, the green section that, um, that the applicant does not need to walk around the notice if the owner of the property does not return the card. So, um, the affidavit that the county requires is, is sufficient for, uh, due diligence. So that was struck, that, we struck that part out. We just require the return receipt and, um, as you'll see further down, um, it's part of the, um, the, uh, items that need to be provided to staff.
I'm sorry, the item that said that last part?
Um, yes, on number seven, uh, the proof of notice. Uh, that part.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry, I'm lost. Number seven, what?
I, I did jump ahead, but I was just trying to explain that the card, we're going to be part of what is returned to staff.
Okay, um, then with that explanation, let me read number three. The applicant sub divider shall utilize one or a combination of the following methods to for providing notice to the affected property owners. A a walk-around notice supplied by the Department of Planning and, and Development with the applicant determining the ownership of parcels from an abstract firm showing the property owners taken from current tax records. Applic, applicant is also responsible for adding any property owners to that list that they have knowledge of that are not reflected on the abstract company list. I'm not sure what that la, oh, the or, okay, just stricken. Um, okay, and so this, this may be subject to discussion in the next meeting dependent upon what we hear back from the assessor, the county assessor's office. Uh, any other questions on three A here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is also responsible for adding any property owner section. I also took that from city of Little Rock code.
Okay, I would think that the burden of proof might be substantial that, I mean, that they know of, but I think that's probably offered in goodwill. If you know that somebody's missing, you should add them.
Right.
Any further discussion on three A?
Oh. Uh, Mr. Chairman, on, you're calling this three A, the one at the top? Is that right?
Uh, well, you, one that begins with. Uh, well, you, one that begins with a walk around notice supplied by the department.
Oh, I see, three A, three B. I'm sorry, I was ahead of this.
Yep. Uh, ready for three B then? A certified mail notice, return receipt requested. To owners utilizing a provided form letter. And a list from the abstract firm showing the property owners taken from current tax records. Applicant is also reflected on the abstract. Oh, wait, woo, applicant is also responsible for adding any property owners to that list. That they have knowledge of that are not reflected on the abstract company list. Um, now, the stricken language. Was language that was proposed, so it's not part of the current ordinance, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so any question about section three B? Uh, also I'll state that it's subject to discussion in the next meeting based upon the. Uh, feedback from the county assessor's office. Okay, moving on, note about the sign, the community states that the signs need to be large enough to be readable from the road. After the twelve, I'm sorry, eleven twenty-three twenty-one meeting. Community is found with a four by four sign as opposed, as a compromise and have removed the four by eight wording. Please know that the thirty days posting is the same as the city for the Little Rock requirements. In another community compromise, the sign was to be posted until the final plat was signed. And certified, but the community thinks. Through the date of the public hearing would be sufficient. Please note that, please note the stipulation is the same as the city of Little Rock requirements. All right, Ben, if you'll proceed to the next page.
Okay, num- number four.
Yes.
There you go. Well, I see.
Hey, uh, so I believe we've seen this purpose before and it's just changing from four by eight to four by four, but. I want to read it here, section number four, all properties involved in major subdivision applications. Or major subdivision variance request applications shall be posted with a physical four by four. Sign at the front of the property to be seen from the street as well as. On the closest principal arterial road. At least thirty days prior to Plasky County Planning Board Public Meeting, Hearing. The signs shall be provided by staff to applicants at the cost specified by staff. If the signs are destroyed or torn down, applicant must obtain replacements from staff.
And Mr. Chairman, I did change some of that language, so it's not exactly the same as it was last time. And I did add, um, about the signs being destroyed or torn down, that's taken from City of Little Rock as well.
Okay, any discussion on this item before we move forward?
Mr. Chairman will show you the signs that the county currently has. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, that's the standard, and that's really the, pretty much the standard size for Little Rock signs. Uh, they have the green ones, theirs are turned vertically. But we have the ability to, well, we've paid to have these produced actually, so the county will have to pay. For the signs and, uh, we have some, well, we'll get to that in a minute, so I guess I have some minor. Minor language, we, we have, we think that the four by four size is excessive. And will cost, will, will have a cost to it that may not be necessary when you can see these signs. Clearly from the road or the telephone pole or the fence posts or even stake to pole on the ground. I mean, it's not like you drive by and you don't see them, um. So that's the staff's, uh, position or their concern about the size of the signs and the cost of the signs. Um, what we would do is on the first, first sentence, we would strike. All properties involved in major subdivision applications or. And we would strike major subdivisions redundant and to say variance request in parentheses, request plural. Application shall be posted with the physical blah, blah, blah sign. In, in front of the property to be seen from the street as well as on the closest. Uh, principal arterial road, and we think that is an excessive requirement. That will not stand up or be reasonable in the sense that. What if the si- the street is a mile away? How do you tell somebody where the thing is? You know what I mean? If you post a sign at an intersection somewhere else, how do they know? Where the act, the subject property is, they don't know unless they can see it from there, so. It's just another sign that would have to be put in the public right of way, which is. An issue for the county, the county doesn't want the signs in the public right of way unless you get. Permission from a private property owner at that intersection or wherever it might be, it's just a lot of. It's a lot of, uh, requirement for something that's going to produce very little return, I think. So we would say, so our issue would be to strike closest principal arterial road. Uh, we don't think that that's necessary, when otherwise we'd. Uh, add after tw- you know, if this, the last sentence, if the signs are destroyed or torn down, comma. The applicant must obtain replacement or replacements from the staff. That would be our comments on that, so. You can see the size we show, you were able to see Jim has held them up. The size, these, that's a variance request sign, it's easily seen, uh, and it's got. It's what we use in the watershed now, and, um, it's got, there's an issue and that explains that what that issue is a variance and that. Where to contact, uh, Plask County Planning and our phone number, if you want additional information. We can see how, well, when we get down to the requirements of what you might want to put on the sign, we'll discuss that in a minute, but. We think that this size sign is adequate to get the job done. And that it's not necessary to try to post it at another intersection of unknown location.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLendon. Yes, Miss Haines?
Um, about the four by four sign, actually, the city of Little Rock requires that for anything over, I think, ten acres. So they do require a larger sign for major subdivisions.
They don't, Miss Haines, they don't require signage at all for subdivisions. All they re- though it, they may have, they require signage for variances, they require signages for rezonings and PCDs and PRDs. And those sorts of things, but according to what our conversation with them, they do not have a requirement for subdivision posting. They, in that sized sign you talked about is for a project that's ten acres or more. They would have a, a large sign or larger sign than normal, I guess, as I understand it anyway.
And that was kind of what I was trying to achieve here, is something that was larger, that had the plat on there that people could see. And, um, it also will have the address of the property. Um, so about it being on an arterial road, with them not knowing where it is, it will, it. In, in terms of what items I was requesting to put on the sign, it, it would have the address. So, um, but I, I understand your point about that and, um. It's just, um, it would just be an added extra. Notice in the rural area, because not everybody drives down, you know, of some of those rural roads. So having it on a, an, uh, a major collector road would be, uh, of a great benefit. And, um. And a lot of those, uh, I guess the state highway would have to be, um, asked, is that correct? To be able to put a sign on, on a, on a state highway.
And the county, I mean, uh, if it's a public road, the county doesn't want anything on a public road, that's what I'm telling you. They, they control signage, and I don't mean it's us, it's planning, I mean, the, the public works and road and bridge. They don't want anything in the public right of way, except the road that they maintain. That's all I'm saying, and then, then it would have to be subject, you setting it back further from the road and putting it on a. Private property owner's property, and he'd have to agree to let you put it on there. And we could get, we could talk about the, what actually goes on the sign in just a minute, but I think this, right now, we're just talking about. The location of one at this point.
And curious, uh, Mr. McLendon, the. Um, uh, in addition to the notification requirements we've already discussed. For all the properties within X number of feet of the prop- of the property. What is the, is there intelligence you can share with us on the benefits of additional signage? On top of that notification that's, that's already been, being required?
I, I, I couldn't imagine it would be that much, except that would just, as, as it might interest somebody driving down the road. That they might just want to know about it, uh, or know that what that meant, or. They might call and say, well, what does that mean, or where is that, or what are they doing, or? But otherwise, the people that are closer, post physically closest to the development in question. Are going to be the ones that are most curious, and they're going to be notified by a certified letter or a walk around notice, so.
So sometimes.
Yes, Miss Haines.
Sometimes in a rural area, a development does affect a whole area, for example, a wastewater treatment plant going in does affect a wider. Area, so, um, I, I do think however that. Uh, I would like to talk to the community about this, but as long as we could have. Um, the thirteen hundred foot. Um, radius, then maybe the, the sign at the collector road would not be necessary.
On the principal arterial road.
Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so moving on, the signs are to remain posted through the date of planning board public hearing. Staff shall visually verify that the required signs have been posted both on the property. And the closest principal arterial road. Is that, uh? So. Mr. McLendon, uh. So it's the applicant, it's the applicant's responsibility to erect the sign and notify. Notify staff. That the sign has been erected?
Well, they, they should, they'll be told when they're supposed to put it there, and we'll go see if it's, in fact, it's been put there.
Okay, any concerns about that then? Mr. McLendon? Okay. All right, the sign shall include the following information, A, title. To be either a major subdivision is being proposed in your community or determined by staff. Let me, I was going to stop, but let me just go through these, and if anybody has anything to, to discuss. Uh, B, address of the site, C, the proposed plat if applicable. D, planning and development telephone number, website, email address. And E, date of applicant subdiviser public hearing before the Plasky County Planning Board. Uh, Mr. McLendon, you've alluded to the, um, as far as what is, what would be included on the signs, so would you like to? Sure, offer staff's opinion?
Sure, uh, on small letter A. Um, we would just change the language to say title will be either quotation marks, a major subdivision. Or, uh, or a variance. A major subdivision or a variance, so that's what, that's what's going to be required of a notice. So either it's going to be a major subdivision variance, we need to, that's what needs to be on the sign. Uh, and then we don't feel it's necessary to have the address of the site because it may not even have an address. It likely won't if it's raw land. Uh, the proposed plat if applicable, we, you know, it's unnecessary, it's going to be, it's going to be on our website. So they can look and see what it is, if they are interested enough to see the sign and to see, uh, the planning and development. We have no problem, have the planning development telephone number there, uh, with the website, so if they want to know more about it. We can, we can direct them to that, or it'll already be on the sign, they can look it up themselves. And the last, uh, we don't think it's necessary that we'd strike E altogether, we don't see a real, we just, we eliminate the email address on D also. Um, because we don't think it's ne- it's not necessary, I mean, we've got a website, we've got our phone number. There's a sign telling about it, if they want to know more about it, they can either go on the web or they can call us and we can tell about it, and, uh. And the date, what if it's deferred, so then you have to go out and try to scratch it out and put a new one on, it's just, it's, it's unnecessary. It's unnecessary because it's going to be on our website, and it's going to be, if they call us, we're going to tell them about when it is. So, and we can tell them it's been deferred, or if they're, if it has been, so we want to keep the, the, the signage simple and effective and. And I think by adding our website, uh, I think in telling exactly specifically explicitly what, what's. The notices for a major subdivision, they say, what's that? Well, they can call us and ask, or they can look on the website. Or if it's a variance, that's pretty clear, something's happening, they can call and ask us and we'll tell them what that is, or it'll be on the website. So we have a phone number and our website, and I think we're good to go. And, uh, people will be able to get all the information they need, if they're interested. They have to be interested enough to look a little further if they are, you know?
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, number five, the applicant subdivider shall submit a provided form letter to the staff. Of the Department of Planning and Development to be posted on the. Public, um, Plasky County Planning and Development's webpage at least thirty days prior to the Plasky County Planning Board Public Hearing. Then any feedback?
Uh, no.
Miss Haines, did you have a comment?
Yes, uh, I wasn't sure if, um, the staff would have to create a new form letter for that process.
Probably, we'd have to, we've got one, we'll just have to, you know, uh, adjust it in a minor way to make sure it's. It's, it's specific to the issue.
And would that be something that, um, that staff could do, that the applicant wouldn't have to do?
Right, yeah, we could provide that, we could provide that when they file with, along with the signage and, uh. The, the instructions, tell them what they have to do.
So could I strike the applicant subdivider shall submit and maybe put staff shall. Um, post or, or do something, um, that doesn't involve the applicant?
Sure, uh, you know, uh, this, you can say the staff shall provide, that's fine, to the, to the, to the applicant. That'll be fine.
Mr. Chairman, just kind of, if I could jump in for a minute, just, just a thought, just a thought for the group. You know, there's, there's, the way y'all are set up today. We submit on the first day of the month. For the fourth Tuesday. And that's kind of the rhythm of the, of the, how it progresses every month throughout the year. Just thinking ahead and trying to. If we go to the thirty days, that means that we've actually got to put the sign up before we ever submitted the application to staff. What would be your thoughts and staff's thoughts on? If we said the sign's got to be posted the first day of the month, which is when we make our application. Uh, it's not going to quite be thirty days, but it's going to be, um. Pushing, pushing for, you know, three to four weeks, and so, and again. We're always thinking, you know, what, what do we need to submit for the next month's, uh, docket? We're thinking the first of the month, which, which really works well, because it never changes. If you look at Little Rock, the dates are always different, but if you look at the county. You get, you get to submit on the first, and you know you're going to come up on the fourth Tuesday unless it's. An unusual month like Christmas or whatever, so that's just my two cents, I, I, I know we're just picking thirty days, but if we said. The first day of the month, that would certainly give us three to four weeks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. White. Okay, number six, staff shall provide email notice to any known property owners associations. Or individuals representing neighborhoods in the area of the major subdivision or variance request. Um, where would, how would staff? Uh, have. What source would we agree? Would be valid for this requirement?
Well, people or organizations request. The information from us, like the League of Women Voters have, has a standing request, they want to be sent. Yeah, the Greater Coalition of Labor Hoods, they all get it, they've already requested the information, so we. Send in the Central Arkansas Water and various other entities that have requested the information, get a copy of the. Agenda when we send it out. And then they can look at the website to get more specifics if they want to know. So we, we have a list of, to answer the question, I guess we have a list of those organizations or entities that are interested in in uh, what's going on at the county. And we notify them.
Is that uh, are you saying that, are you proposing that that would meet this requirement and you're okay with leaving this requirement in? Or still this is not relevant?
Yes, we're, we're agreeing, it's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on number six?
Uh, yes, uh, one thing I thought I might add is at the end of it, um, it says uh, representing neighborhoods in the area of the major subdivision or major subdivision variance request. Do you think that would be a good um, edit, Mr. McLendon? To, to specify is?
I, I think the, there was a major subdivision earlier that he was saying was removed. I remember reading this thing and that would, so then I think you, I think earlier in an area where it said the major subdivision or major subdivision variance request, I was thinking that you struck, you were proposing that we strike the second major subdivision and it read major subdivision or mayor or variance request.
Yeah, right.
I was just trying to narrow it down so it wasn't every variance request, but if he's already doing that now, um, you can just forget what I just said.
Yeah, because every, everybody's already being notified of any variance request as it is. So.
Okay.
All the adjacent, whatever the property owner notice radius is or in the future are notified and right now it's all the adjacent property owners and those across the road are being notified. That's what the ordinance requires.
All right, number seven, any other discussion on number six? Okay, number seven, proof of notice is to be, and again, this uh, is not highlighted. So this is current ordinance uh, verbiage. Proof of notice is to be filed with the staff of the Department of Planning and Development at least or stricken to me, six days prior to the public hearing and shall include A, green PS Form thirty eight eleven and white certified mail receipts, PS Form thirty eight hundred proof of mailing stamped by the post office. B, certified listing of recorded property owners from abstract company. C, list of owners notified and D, copy of the completed public meeting notice and signed affidavit. Mr. McLendon, do you, the staff have?
We have no issues with that.
Okay. A discussion on section number seven?
The only, yes, the only thing I thought about afterwards about adding on A is to start it out with saying if using certified mail um, return receipt method. Because not everyone is going to have a green and white mail receipt if they're using a walk around method. So I was just, uh, wanted to preface it with that.
Well, they'll have a list of cert of owners notified and a affidavit saying they did it. So they already have to provide that.
So maybe there to, to Mrs. Zane's point, then maybe it needs to say A or B and then C and D or wait, is that right? List of owners notified.
And I did take, I did take this language directly from City of Little Rock code, by the way, um. I, I modified it just slightly.
So maybe A, it just has at the end of it um, as relative, I mean, relevant, uh, relevant.
Um, I know what you're thinking, yes.
Um, I think in the scheme of things, I think we're in general consensus on that and we could just, we could come up with that. Um, so um, being at the end of this proposal, um, I have to think about the wisest and most efficient way for us to move forward. And I'd like to hear from the board, staff and others on opinions on whether we continue with the full board or we consider a committee uh, to take this forward. Um, there are I would say a number of discrepancies that we've discussed today. Uh, that's the reason why I'd like to, to hear from board members specifically. Are you guys willing to go along for this ride to that level of detail or would you prefer a committee do that and bring a proposed, a finalized proposal to the, to the board? Now, as I say that, I mean, there's only six board members here today. So what's a committee? Half of us? I'm opening it for discussion here. Um, if there is none, then I, I suppose basically like what I just said, there's only six of us in attendance today. So I don't know what forming a committee gets us and possibly could actually even cost us more time.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I think we just continue the next iteration in the January meeting, once it's been refined and and if we get close enough at that meeting to recommend something to vote, then we'll bring back in February a resolution from the planning board with that, those amendments in it. And the planning board can vote on it and we can advertise it in February or whatever month it is, you know?
Right. Um, any other opinions on that?
Yeah, I agree. We just, we've all been picking, uh, picking it apart. We've all been dealing very specifically with this. And uh, and, and so I, you know, I don't think there's any need for committee. We just you know, vote and the people vote to either amend or it's.
Okay, so then uh, I'm going to, that, that puts onus on us then uh, to keep this from drawing out over six, seven months. Um, then uh, board members, we're going to have to come to subsequent meetings with opinions on, on these matter, matters. Um, on, so so there have been some, some changes proposed today that I think were somewhat agreeable. Uh, I, so Mrs. Zanes and Mr. McLendon, uh, I'd like to propose you guys consider getting the board an updated version of what we've read through today within the, maybe, well, I'm sorry, a week from today is going to get us into the Christmas holidays. But, you know, I, I think within whatever time you guys feel is reasonable, uh, I'd like the board to have a copy of this so that we could consider it before the next meeting.
With, I think we can get it to you, uh, probably in the first, first week of the new year and then you'll have two or three weeks to look at.
Yeah, I agree. If you did that by January the seventh, our meeting is January the twenty fifth. So I agree, that would give everybody at a little bit more than two weeks if you were to take that entire first week to get it to us. So I, I feel good about that unless there's objection from the board. Okay, so then um, uh, Mr. McLendon will uh, work with appropriate stakeholders parties to provide an updated version of this document to the board by, by Friday, January the seventh for consideration and I'm encouraging uh, strongly board members to review and come to the January twenty fifth meeting with opinions on, on uh, on the proposed change. For example, uh, the sign uh, the, so we're looking at it the four by four here. Um, come with opinion that the, uh, the uh, having nine meetings instead of twelve due to the thirty day notice uh, versus the six. Uh, so all of that, we need to, we need to be prepared as we possibly can, as prepared as we possibly can be to, to move this forward, this conversation forward in January. Any questions, concerns, comments on what I just said? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Mary. Ask if it's okay um, for me to work with Mr. McLendon then to um, come up with these changes by January seventh? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, that, that, I'm asking, I'm asking staff to come up with this and so um, I, it, Mr. McLendon, is that collaboration that is needed at this time?
Well, I mean, I guess we could uh, write it up with the options in the places where their questions exist and then y'all can decide what you want to do.
Um, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Hayes.
Uh, you know, I don't mind the nine meetings. Uh, I think thirty days, I might have a little bit of an issue with that. But could you come up with an alternative with nine meetings and say fifteen days?
Well, I think that's taken a step further, uh, of Mr. Hayes. I, I appreciate that input. I, I think what I'd like to, what, what what I think would be helpful um, is that if, if staff would take this document um, and get it closer to proposed language, for example, removing compromise, you know, verbiage as far as compromise and community and and things like that, that helped get us to this point and get it in more of a, a votable form and identify the, uh, Mr. McLendon, like you were saying, the areas that would, that maybe um, uh, that we would need to discuss, you know, options for, like the days and the sign um, uh, side for the signage and so forth. Does that make sense, Mr. McLendon?
Yes.
Okay, so Eric, I'm sorry, Chairman, you don't need me to do anything more at this point.
I, I think that Mr. McLendon uh, would like to provide a, a, a an updated version to you and the board for initial input. I think that, that gets, that moves us along.
Okay, yes, sure.
Because we would, um, you know, he gets into this by Friday, January the seventh. We have two weeks and two days before the next meeting. So um, I just think that it would, you know, maybe from your standards, Mrs. Zane's, you'd be prepared to receive by that Friday and and uh, have time devoted early the week of the tenth, maybe to, to provide feedback. If you feel like it was, if there was something that
Yes, I'd like to take the proposed changes to the community and get their feedback on that.
Okay, uh, but just well, to that point, uh, the, the, the challenge to Mr. McLendon and staff will be to not necessarily um, date thirty days, six days, fifteen days, whatever, but, but put in there, these are the things that we need to work out. I'm, I'm indifferent, Mr. McLendon, if you want to leave thirty days in there or not, that we, but somehow it would need to be identified, these, these are the areas that we still need to be, that we need to discuss.
We'll change the, the minor language that is necessary and and post in the, in the places where there's a decision to be made by the board, we'll put what we think the options are to choose from.
Very good.
How about that?
That would be very helpful, thank you. Okay, any other discussion on uh, the document or the process as just find out? Okay, moving on, chairman communication, I'll just say I appreciate everybody's input. Uh, uh, we're, we're working through this. I think we're making good progress. I appreciate everybody's patience and input. Uh, staff communication?
Uh, we don't have anything at this time.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Hallelujah.
I'll take that as the motion.
Amen.
I'll hear a second.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Zane's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This reminds me of city council meetings.
Fond memories, I'm sure.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Bye.
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 Thank you.